Don Williams, do you have a public comment?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I just really appreciate the the write-up that was included in the agenda. Regarding food trucks, it's really, it's really interesting to follow it and it's well done, so I appreciate that. As you guys go ahead, thanks a lot.
Do you have a public comment? Andy, do you have a public comment? Ken?
Nope.
Okay, that concludes public comments, so get on to the discussion. Before we start the discussion, I just want, we dealt with this before. And that's reason I've got quite a bit in the package. And so, but I think we need to start over and get to people and we need to start from scratch. But I want to bring out the four W's, food. Who can have a food truck, anyone, restaurants or restaurants? What, what is a food truck, can be TruR, Roach Coach, or this has a food truck? So these three, five. Where can they go, can they go on any street, food truck court, or a name of business? When, year-round, long weekend season? So with starting the discussion, I talked with Pat, David Pat, has volunteered to lead the discussion. He had an investment interest in this and will not vote and bring something to the table. Does anybody have a follow-up to that?
Well, my question, when you say investment interest?
Well, he may want a food truck.
More than that, I think it's some, that I have a restaurant.
Yeah, you're on the other side of the.
Right, but I also may want a food truck, so.
Why would you eliminate a person who potentially want the food truck or a restaurant or even a system that wants the food truck? I mean, I'm, 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 I'm thinking that if we were going to do food trucks, that we would need to have a a full dialogue of everyone who would be affected.
That's true, and Pat will have a full dialogue, but he also is, could be very biased.
So then if, say, I, I was on the city council, then I should excuse myself of having any conversation about food trucks because I'm part of the restaurant. Is that?
Voting.
And voting.
But, but if I was, but so if I am, so for instance, Eric Noel, who runs a hotel, that could potentially have a food truck.
That's a valid.
I think that the, the discussion from such a peo- such people who have a vested interest and knowledge is a good thing. I don't like the idea of them voting because it could come back to haunt you later, saying this was the bias, but bias to vote. But I think the input from Patrick is invaluable to the discussion. So I like the discussion, I would prefer they did not vote.
Okay, but did you exclude anyone that owned, owned undeveloped property in which insurance, when you had that discussion?
I guess undeveloped.
Well, so a camp, anywhere on the commission, having a camp law when you're having a special.
Yeah, I don't.
I understand the point.
I'm just saying that, that when you start excluding.
My other question would be, I don't know, I'm not smarter than that. The fact that we're not elected, maybe. Appointed versus elected, I don't think so. But I mean, I think our agreement's slightly different where we are appointed and not elected. You know, if.
If somehow you were to stack the funding position with a bias to get your agenda through, I, that's a concern that I'm hearing, and I'll know that.
I'll, I'll, I'll start off, that's why I wasn't very often, the, the difference in the council is elected officials who can be elected. Unappointed, or not re-elected, we're playing into the, the different options for. So why don't we do this, why don't we continue our discussion? Through this, decide by the time it's time to take a vote, whether I should retrieve myself or not. That's, that's great. Okay, one last thing, we want to turn to Pat. Make sure you recognize, or even share with Pat before you talk with the judge. And not everybody gets so sick, so, and, but Pat should be the one to recognize.
So, food truck, Richard did a lot of research on this, we do have an existing code on food trucks. I believe that Marshall is someone that perfected this bit. I'd like to get his view on it first, first, sorry. Are you referring to the, the special event code that addresses kind of addresses vending, or that, what you and I talked about last week, when you thought maybe there is certain sections of it that allows it now?
And that's, I, I reviewed that again today in preparation for this discussion, and in chapter five dot twenty-four, special events, specifically allows for food sale using city facilities or property with a special event permit. However, the definition is not to apply to events which are conducted at the convention center. Based on my interpretation, the convention center, if you run a food truck, they're pretty much, they're pretty much covered by, you know, a contract with the convention center and the code basically excludes them from the prohibition of vending. A vendor, which is what we're calling food trucks, means selling, displaying or advertising goods or services in any area or location not covered by a city business license. So if you've got a city business license, then you can vendor. What I haven't vetted is the ability for that vending facility to be a trailer, a food truck, you know, and, and activity that would be somewhat outdoor in nature. When I went to the V two, the V one retail commercial zone, which is probably the area that that would be most likely to, to see a proposal for vending under the forbidden uses, restaurants and cafe and cafes are specifically, you know, food service type establishments that are allowed. The only place in code that I could find where vending was, would not be prohibited, or would be prohibited, there were two places. Let's go back to the special event chapter. Five dot twenty-four dot oh four oh, activity not allowed, vending as defined in this order, is not allowed except for stewards to nine dot oh one dot one ten. That's the parks code, so vending in the park has a has a profit where you would get a permit from the public works director. You know, there is code that, that would allow for that. So there are some, there are some areas where I have a really hard time saying vending is prohibited in the special events. It says you can do it, but there was a timeframe. Fifteen days, is that? I, I don't remember a time limitation, my memory is. It's, it's fifteen days, I believe, for a for-profit and nonprofits are afforded six years, I remember. I thought I highlighted that, so that. Nonetheless, the special event code is fairly cumbersome in that there's insurance requirements, full city staff review by police, fire, public works, you know, health department, other types of codes that would apply to food service. So I, I think you said, I think it's important that everybody recognizes, especially events are not convention center events. There are two separate categories. They are, and that was the distinction that I, that I kept going back to that would that would lead me to believe that food sales outside of that venue would fall into a special event on private property. Okay, tell them.
You know, one of the things that I see that's going to limit where vending food trucks can occur is by the bathroom requirements. Unless they're in the park or they're in downtown where there's bathrooms available for employees, they're not going to be able to have a food truck, so that's a limit right there.
Okay, Richard, RCW, I don't remember what we want, but specifies that the food truck has to be within five hundred feet of a hot water hand washing.
Two hundred to five hundred feet.
Hundred and change, it's a couple of years before five hundred. So.
That in itself is limiting.
I've done research on food trucks, food trailers. There are food trucks that are equipped with bathrooms because it's for the employee, not for the, not for the customer. They are equipped with bathrooms, all food trucks and food trailers have hot water. Okay, they have a small hot water if you have to in order to comply with county code for dishwashing and stuff like that. So the food truck do have bathrooms, some do, not all, but some do have bathrooms with facilities and all have hot water.
But that does still limit where they can go because a huge number of them do not have bathrooms.
I'm just saying that that is so limiting.
Well, even though food trucks have hot water, by the health code, they absolutely have to have a separate hand washing sink. So they can't have hot water out of the dishwashing sink to wash their hands, it has to be separate hand washing sink.
That's a safe function, not a hot water function.
Correct, so yes, is, the half, it's just like a restaurant. Hand washing sinks required a three compartment sink, but that's, that's accounting. There's a, they have to pass, LNI, they also have to pass county ordinance and the health department. And so they have to have everything that they require to have food truck. But that's secondary, what we're doing here, what we're doing here is we're trying to decide if, where we want food truck. And are, is there requiring for bathrooms for customers?
Yeah, that could be handled by a court.
So I, I found a code that I was looking for that refers to where and for how long. So in the seventeen thirty-four oh sixty, the general regulation of the V one district, section D, sentence two, businesses are permitted fifteen days of sidewalk sale or special event outdoor sale for a year, provided that the sale is conducted adjacent to and connection with a property enjoying a food permanent structure. So I don't know if that's where your bathroom availability gets tied into that or not. And it says nonprofit organizations are permitted sixteen of sidewalk or special event outdoor sale. Okay? All right. Are you, are you saying that we shouldn't concern ourselves with the cancer of food truck itself? Or the distance to put bathrooms because that's R C W or county possibility? The bathroom, but the hot water, the hand washing, the three compartment sink. So there's two regulations we could have to meet for food truck to be legal. One is it has to have an online certification, including Washington. Number two, it has to have a county cert, permit to operate, so they have to physically, just like they're opening a new restaurant. You have to physically submit plans and specifications to the county. They'll actually come out and inspect it, inspect it and approve it. Is bathroom rule? Bathroom, bathroom is a city, not a, not a county, either state or state or something. I don't believe so. As we, as we are getting into this discussion, I think it might be worth us separating food truck from potential accessory kitchen. The other thing I think is, is important is that we'll find what a food truck is, and nowhere in our code is on food truck. So an accessory kitchen would be, if I owned a restaurant and I just don't have enough real space to keep up with demand, and I had an accessory kitchen that passed my brick and mortar establishment, I think that, I think it's worth considering that that should be handled different than just a cart wash food truck. I can see lots of reasons, plenty of advantages of that way, is that the brick and mortar is already paid. Their, their same fee, their tax, all of that stuff, and the food truck accessory kitchen would just be, just like building a extending kitchen, but would be much more affordable, particularly much more affordable to the business. So I think it's worth considering having that concept differently than just a, I drive onto the property with my food truck. So I probably would like to see two separate discussions, accessory kitchens and food truck. Good point.
I think, I think that's, that's valid. I also think that we need to consider, number one, does the city motion court want food truck?
And.
First. Secondly, and I feel like maybe the answer to that is yes.
I, I will see that, if I may, where that's really relevant. Well, I guess it is something we need to talk about, we're, we're not. I think what we need to come up with is, if the city council and the mayor want to request food truck, what would we recommend? Or how would we recommend maybe regularly, not should they have them? So obviously, within, within our purview, where? It's something we would, we would discuss. If desired, where would we say, and what are the impacts of prior versus public? Something we definitely have to address when we move.
I, I think first, we probably should address some things that you remember we addressed in the past there. That bricks and mortar pay property tax, they have a huge investment versus the startup for a food truck. Are we setting ourselves up for losing restaurants, as we have done in the past two years, several have gone out of business? If we dilute the profit, are we going to end up without restaurants in town once the tourists and the food trucks leave town?
Is, is that in our, our agreement as a plan, do we should know? What, worrying about protecting existing restaurants? Okay, I'm just curious, I don't know, we have one of them down here, we, that's one of our agreements to protect.
So, I don't know if that's, that's our role or not, but one of the things, as you do the research, because I've had another meeting, like, too very, very difficult. That would like you to look and see what other cities do as far as fees or requirements, you know, because one of the people that asked our finance director to look to give me a list of how much taxes we're getting on our, from our existing food trucks, and we do not have a record of them in the region. But when you now get a state license, you are licensed throughout the state, not as a city, so you don't get, particularly ocean shores. Sales taxes are paid if they mark whatever city they're in, so it, they're, food trucks go place to place, so that's not something in there. And if, right now, food trucks come in, we, we don't, right now, we don't keep records of the food trucks coming in, so therefore we don't send them any I think there'd be no tax. So, and most likely that they probably are below the threshold, we collect a, you know, tax. But there must be others who may have some type of finance, how to address it. Because to me, again, I don't know if it's our our responsibility to protect a restaurant, but there's also fairness of, if you're going to invite a business into your your city of revenue of services that are owing you. So I don't know what the answer is, that, but right now that we don't have a process within our city as far as keeping records of what we're doing with it, other than if they are a part of the convention.
And, I think it can be very, very cumbersome. Who, who would handle that, keeping that record? That sounds like a full-time job for, for somebody. And, and is that a system that could be, could be feasible? And I had forgotten about the city had, had gone to a countywide license or statewide license rather than a stateful license. My thought is that Angie, Diane, and other city staff come up with a license and fee. Where's, would you just say?
No, you, 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 I, I'm saying, there's, there's gotta be other cities that have. Have the answer. So, I mean, that's, that, that's, I, I think there's plenty to talk about as far as the food truck. I'm counting on the planning commission to come back with a recommendation. Council last night at the council meeting put on discussion of food truck at the next council. So hopefully we'll have something, but I know that you may not have something by the next meeting, so it is, it is what it is, but it, but there's just a lot of stuff to go through, and I count on you guys to give us a direction.
Well, from the last time we did this discussion, it's been a month. And I don't see it's coming down, I can't.
And, and that's fair, I mean, I, but that's what the council wants to have as a session of the council.
So in this packet, there is quite a bit of information about what other cities are doing, V L A T, Everett, Wood Ashy, Ellensburg. I think, rather than trying to bend the wheel, we probably want to dive into a few of those cities and see, just like we did when we did design standards. So, and there's hyperlinks to it, if you look at this document.
So I was impressed with the hyperlinks, when I, when I printed that and, and sent it out, I, I didn't think that when it turned into a PDF, I think the hyperlinks disabled. And so even initially, like the word copy of that was heavily changed. It's gonna be, I think, then, then, then the word document out, and then by the way, or with the legacy law of those cities.
I think we should do that. And before I go, I just want, first of all, I want to thank everything that you guys do. My, my vision is, there's a lot of things, even more coming that are staying on desk. Our next council meeting will bring back a resolution, a discussion on residential standards. Then I'm just gonna start bringing all the other things through, so as soon as the council can get down with one, I'm gonna bring them in, so I really, really appreciate the work that you guys do, because it makes my life more easier. You provide me with the talking points. So, people, good work. All right, see you guys.
So, um. I think what I'd like to do is move forward with identifying similar cities to a conversion, but if we could do that and see what they do for food trucks instead of trying to just turn this into a motion court specific, yeah, well, I, while we were doing that, I was, I actually called the city. Longish email, and they were not food trucking all, right? And I think we found that now story has food truck courts. Correct, and, and the, the, the city planner that I talked to, Brian Burke, who once said, if the board of Oregon just, that's what they do, they have food truck courts. And throughout Oregon, I think food trucks are just another business. And you're open, you're licensing and, and your regulatory bell and whistles, and then you're, you're just another, I don't know, item shop or, or restaurant or, we're not even wrong. So I, I agree with what Pat said, if they have what city similar ocean shores. And there's, and there's two pieces, I think, when we talked about in V one, obviously, would, then we would be able to infer some pre-standard business code, regulations, from, 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 really simple to do. And former resident on your right, with the exception of, they will do special event at home property. So if you have a food truck, if you want to put it on home property, it's a special event, similar like we were doing special here. So there is a way in Oregon, you know, both food trucks, ninety-nine percent of them, you know, food truck or food truck property. But there is job, there is, like, no problem, well, they will log into, there's less of a, but that's we have that provision of the special one. The issue would follow from here. So I'm getting a little bit into the weeds, I think it needs to, it's I, I had some attention. One of the problems I see with food trucks is how to handle the food, fat wastewater. And it would just dump that down our existing wastewater system. There's an expert on wastewater, what you, that, would that have on our wastewater? Our pipes and our treatment facilities?
Not available, is it?
Yeah, currently, city code and state law prohibit that, down, down the sanitary sewer system, there's both being approved. Size grease interceptor or oil water separated, most food trucks are equipped with that. Uh, that's been my research, it's shown, what a little bit of experience I have with, with Roy and Jorge's food truck. Because they are providing some grease interceptor type.
They make little, horrible ones. Yeah, and also, and my parents, you know, they're former residents, they're, well, one of the love of, if you're in a pod, one of the large use, like, for your fire grease, called emfo, so the food often with odd operator or owner will put in a large grease receptacle for the big things, and each truck does it all in truck, oil water separation. I think that's sort of, what I'm hearing is, is my wastewater is a non-concern, is what I'm hearing. It's a compliance issue, but it's handled by our code, we're not, no special code, please. So is, I guess, do they have a recommendation of cities? I think the M R I C, uh, listed in this document, I think that's a great starting place. And, and I don't know whether the states, or, or, or similar to ocean shores, or similar enough to ocean shores, that we treat them, we look at them specifically, right? Not necessarily similar, but called aggregate damage.
So it's okay.
Yeah, there's a couple.
And that would be good because.
Well, I don't know. Where food truck or food truck. That's what I looked and couldn't find it. It it's your point here, it's really hard. There. This whole uh voice being taken off venue is so vague. Uh uh and basically, if you want to operate a food truck, it's not part of the convention center, then you have to apply for a special permit. Uh and that's the mayor or that's the public works, uh and that's all it says, and most of that is back in the park. So so if I had a lot downtown, I'd already do a food. A food truck pot. I forgot why I couldn't right now.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm 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 right there with you. My deal with the district. So we're we're making the inference that a food truck is a vendor. Because vendors are the only thing that are regulated. It's so. So.
Okay, I see what you want there.
So we don't have, so that's probably one of the first things that we should leave from one of the other uh cities and that good code is their definition of a food truck or a trailer if they've got multiple definitions. And then um. In in the special events part, we have defined a distortance when it says it's not allowed except for pursuant to section ninety nine oh one. That's the first. Right, so it would be prohibited in the first, except without affirmative. It's prohibited on city property, except without a special event. Um it doesn't prohibit it on private company and. And so that's probably where I'm.
B one problem.
No, no, correct, I I would agree with. So we'll be talking about B one and B two laws. For the purpose of the session, that was the only thing I pressed for.
So some months ago, uh there was kind of a little fair thing put up at the Shiloh parking lot. And it was shut down because they were not compliant, I don't remember the details of that. Uh um but they had food trucks and there was a whole bunch of of uproar about how come they shut down the food trucks? Yum yum yum, all of the all of the noise that that is slapping me. Um uh and I don't know if anybody else remembers that incident.
I I talked to the code enforcement officer two weeks ago about that specific in incidents to find out what code he was citing when he shut it off, he said we haven't let him start that. So it was a temporary closure. You know, and and then it was allowed to resume. We we have the uh the Ace Hardware, he's wanted food truck in on occasion to cater for their um for their customers without. Any incident for a special permit or whatever. They weren't selling food, they were just uh.
So that that goes back to what I said at the beginning. Uh I think that there's a big distinction between accessory kitchen attached to brick and mortar and food truck. And I think that both of those deserve to be defined in our code. Uh and that there being not just a general vending, but specifically uh food truck vending and accessory kitchen in my view. Would not be vending, nobody would go up to the accessory kitchen and order a hamburger, you'd go to the to the to the. Council and order a hamburger and the cook, the the staff will take it back to the. To the truck to have a cook because they just don't have enough food space. In their kitchen. Um so I think those are two different animals, and and somebody cited on. So I think that that was very efficient.
I I almost see it to be a clearly different issues from my standpoint. I'm really not in favor of a food truck to attack. However. I would be in favor of, for example, a restaurant where you're already paid for bricks and molly, you're paying city taxes. If you wanted to wait a span to a truck outdoors to accommodate the customer, you have, I wouldn't have a problem. Um I I do have a problem with food trucks all over that. But I think when someone's paying the whole price, they're here all year. Um I like to accommodate those kinds of.
You know, that's.
Yeah, but the other piece of it is what if, what's the difference?
A food truck pod, which is basically five restaurants or four restaurants. And they use a property, private property, personal zone versus new restaurant. I personally don't see a difference. I just don't, you know, because maybe from the environment I'm used to.
The investment is different.
Sure. But it's also business. It's, you know, we shouldn't. I don't want to argue, I don't I don't think we should be. Overly something the. You know, filming the the business sale when the public. It's more truly affect them. But if somebody thinks about here, it's putting up two codes. That meet all requirements, uh piece of property, person, food truck pot. That's. I guess that's, I don't really see that sort of any difference in front of the voices.
Well, this is how I view our job, is to want to invest for this community as a whole as we grow. And I think maintaining restaurants that will be here fifty two weeks of the year. Should serve the community is extremely important.
So uh on the food trucks, I'm completely for it, not only that, I think that um I think that the. The thought of the the protecting all brick and mortar is a little bit in the past, uh the the uh. Around the country, you've got food trucks popping up all over places, they. A whole contingent of people, uh culinary professionals that start out from food trucks and it actually gives them a place to start out their restaurant. Okay, uh this is stuff that's happened in the last ten fifteen years across the country. And I think uh I think that it's a really positive thing for the community, I think it's a positive thing for ocean shores. I also think I've seen in in cases recently where. Our overall restaurant infrastructure couldn't keep up with the amount of demand in the community. And having some food trucks available in those peak times would be a good thing.
But you're, so I I hear, I am hearing in clear reports before everybody is saying. It was what uh Brian just said is part of why I printed this out, and this gives some insight to how much demand there really is. Uh uh and it gives the insight both by year and by uh season of the year. Uh and so I think there's no question that in visitor season. Cause the restaurants are swamped, and so one of the things to consider is allow food truck entering specific season. When when there's more restaurants and man than there are restaurants. Uh and that'll make sense then, uh uh what Jerry just said about a food pot. Again, the reason Jerry and 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 that food pot, uh they would be essentially another big import. Uh and and they would be paying their equitable share of 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 the taxes and infrastructure. But what I'm considering, uh and I think you. Yeah, exactly, that's what we need to go back on.
They get a license and they do it exactly like I did. They do their reporting and ask them, that's what they work, you work to the department of revenue, they have city business sites, they have a B N O backs. Everything works together.
Well, it maybe, yeah, I think for, again, there's again two pieces of it, I think there's a special event, which is what we have now. In the convention center, we call special special event days, which is the only frame of reference we have. Uh that's not, I don't think we want to tighten up the convention center, that's really not what we want to do. But I mean, one way out is not one way out, one thing we consider is. If you want to put a food truck on public property, you need to get a special event. And then you appropriately go through large force with health and safety, fire and all that sort of stuff, if you want to do it on public property.
Great.
Number two, if you want to put it on prior property, a different thing will happen. Right, one other regulation, we use the prior property and. It's it's different in that the owner of the pot pays something. And then the owner of the truck on the pot would not figure out how to work out all of that, that's something that I'm probably want. Smarter to figure out how to get rid of a lot of that. So we say, we say a spot in my policy.
Well, there'd be two pieces to that, we said, five, that guy would be landlord. Each one of those individuals, trucks would have to have their own business site. And do all their own reporting, we could run a separate business.
Exactly.
However. Thing that I struggle with is that if somebody takes a commercial piece of property. No matter where, and they scrape it and they throw a food truck on, and that's all they do, is that something that we want?
Ottawa?
A pod's one thing. Okay, but somebody just taking a piece of property and just having a food truck on it is another thing. Cause you could end up with third food trucks here. So I don't know.
And to my opinion, it's not more than a block of street guys. Taking up, we should be for commercial property, park all of his tree cutting equipment. I think we allow that.
Yeah.
We allow a lot of things on public property around here. Now, we're going after something here that's a little, that people actually commonly will use. Um I want to make sure this thing gets comfortable. But I also, as a citizen, want to make sure that visitors and residents. Have a place they want to go and eat and get something to eat. Do attempt to grab it out, it's impossible, the weights are impossible.
So to the point of season, seasonality. Seasonality is going to take care of itself.
Exactly.
Because if you have a food truck and it's pouring sideways or cold.
There's not going to be a lot of people, they're just gonna walk up to that food truck cover, food is sitting there and waiting. You're gonna justify the burden more, the only difference is your margins, right? You're gonna barely survive or live in some way there, or shut down like. You choose to shut out. Then reopen. Um or you know, the difference, the difference in the margin is in margin. So owning restaurants. I have no issue with this.
As long as it's a level playing field, they'll pay the same thing that we. Because they pay their taxes, they're in the same D and O that we pass, they go through the same rules and regulations that we have. The three straps, three interceptors, all that. My restaurant's totally different than once you're gonna get out of a food truck, but what food trucks will do. Is it'll up the game of the breaking mortar restaurants, it was not gonna put them out there. No. It's all what we do with the food truck. Far as what we allow, maybe we limit the number of food trucks.
I will, I think, I think two pieces, all the properties are part of that, I always, then, I think we can think of all other things. And with the L I regulations for food trucks and say it's a special event. For more data, I think the convention center is a full time. Um so.
If it's public property, that's gotta be something that the city says is allowed.
It's other special event for the convention center.
First, right, and right now, the only thing you can do that is mention. Private property is a different story. Don't disagree with that, so. I don't know how much we can say about public property, I know we can say a lot about.
Right. But for a lot of the. Engineering and the food, health, all that's all itself is covered by L and I, it comes from. But food truck is the right one. There it is.
Not so much where it is, but how it is.
Right, it it's gonna be the restaurant requirement, the health, safety, coordination, fire. You need to make sure everybody understands that piece of it.
Well, again, that is something that we don't control, that's market industry is very defined. That's basically, can we help the government, that's very defined. What we need to do is decide. What, where, where?
Okay, so looking, looking at the the process, or uh first, if we were to allow uh. You know, signing on public property uh under the current special event uh provision of the code. It's it's very onerous, it says the component of file with the furnace or special day calculation, some plans showing all killing buildings, structures we use temporarily constructed. Including pedestrian traffic out this way, I'm assuming this is for more carnival type or a fair type. Uh of the old, but it's a sixty day prior to the event. So. When we talk about, you know, applying the special event code to the current app, it doesn't look to me like it's gonna work effectively just because of the time frame this requires for the review process. Sixty days isn't enough. Um well, I I don't know that the food truck guys are planning sixty days in advance of where they're gonna be. Um my guess is they're more, not necessarily applied by height in any way. But pop of the place to place, if they don't plan their, I mean, maybe they would plan events based on uh all the weekends and communities and that kind of thing, but. But it seems to me like it's, you know. I have people call me up on Monday and say, hey, can I do this down?
So you're suggesting it should be more flexible?
Well, I think that, yeah, I think there needs to be a more flexible path to permitting. If for for the uh for the food truck industry, for the special event or for crime, for public.
Well, I. I would say probably one for each, um streamlining the one for public. Um public use, because the big thing, I'm trying to talk about that, the big thing I see, people say, why can't we have food trucks on conventions that are living? The middle of the summer. That's really important, very important, right?
Um kind of, but there are some places on private property or on private property. But yeah, the biggest piece of public property or obviously makes sense.
Yeah.
Would be the convention center. When the problem. Well, that all because the convention center is the boat. I mean, they they have the facilities, they do, they've got power, they've got water, they've got everything that you would need. To do that, I don't believe that there's any other public places that can adopt it. Just at this point, most convention center events are free day events. Diane charges a flat fee, two hundred and fifty dollars, that every. Then include our ourselves, the mileage, whatever you're selling, the flat fee, and and that's where the city gives their money, so you're paying two hundred and fifty dollars to participate in this three day event. So part of my lot that I did press during pretty early. Is the city, Angie and Diane and my city staff come up with with a fee, if you're gonna be at the three days, this should be, if you're gonna be here for three months of the. This should be, uh if you wanna come here for a week, this should be, again, and. If I came here for the month of February, I would pay this fee, if I came back in August, I'd pay the same fee. Uh but I would pay the summer. Or I'm paying for the season, all construction, you know, I mean, all of the law. But we still don't come to food trucks, okay? You know, the issue I got with that is that. A flat fee. If there, if it's that flat fee is just for parking the food truck and using the space. That's fine.
Still doesn't collect that.
But they still need to be a a business license, they still need to pay B N O backs, they still need to pay department of revenue. I mean, we paid, my restaurant paid, I just signed a check yesterday, seventeen thousand dollars, department revenue for last month. And then whatever B N O tax is, the city, it's that's that a few thousand dollars. The question would be is. Yeah, it's it's kind of obvious that we should get a city, is there anything in the state regulations that would have to be that? A local.
That's that's a that's a local thing.
Okay.
Perfect, whatever you. You're gonna have to pay that no matter what.
Um the question is. Oh, the question is, let's see what this is about. I agree. Is she collecting? I mean, I go there every other week.
I mean, I kinda think that that the regulatory piece of this thing will get. Will get enlightened as soon as we get to one of these cities to see how to do it. The the location piece of this thing is another issue. Fee on tax is so low, two hundred and fifty dollars, you have to fund in the city. Well, basically, yeah, but but we can't afford that. Cause they have to report that to the apartment revenue. If we're paying two mils to the city, progress. What goes in for sale. He made too many money, paid the city two dollars last year, well, no food trucks now. Um, you know, maybe even more than a month, ten thousand less a week. Disagree on the numbers. Whatever it is, but still. If the city gets two hundred and fifty bucks for the spot, not for B and O tax.
Additional.
I think the carpet should be a fee. And they should, business license fee on tax should be additional.
The only thing I would ask that we probably vote on. Probably they could spend a lot getting the same thing. Thirty days. Cause my old people made the guys, oh, they're the guys that were at the. Uh, the last camp. Where's the whole festival? They have to listen to stuff like. I'm almost, I'm almost sure that. Check with Diane to make sure.
People do, people out at convention center. They should. Anybody that does business in the city, period, whether they put my garage door in or they pull my lawn. Whatever it is they do. And they shouldn't pay me enough. Even, and I know there's some thresholds, but still. That fifty bucks for your business license is fifty bucks.
You you said something a little while ago, uh, and and I. There's a lot about taxes in this city that that I just haven't investigated. Uh, so things that comes to the restaurant, you're paying, you're paying sales tax. That's important to be safe, and I hate to withhold share of that, right? Then you're paying B and O tax, which you're also paying property tax. And in my understanding, the property tax is the piece that misses from food truck. Because I mean, you know, I know what your property tax is, but it's hard on the restaurant. Uh, but there's a lot of it. Uh, and and so how do you make that food truck pay an equitable share of that property?
So, well, it's that's, it's, if you get here, they're talking on parking. Public property. It's the property tax and any improvement that they are, that they've gone on that block. That truck, they, they're paying half, they're paying whatever. Um, to the state of the city, so give a piece of that. But it's, you you can't, it's considered a personal property.
So, the the issue is the, the improvement from the action that we're doing. Not like a brick and mortar.
However, the opportunity to make more money is far greater for somebody who invests in the brick and mortar. So, it's risk-free work. That's coming from a restaurant.
Again, uh, from an insurance standpoint, I I've I've written policies on on food trucks. And a lot of these business owners use food trucks as a stepping stone to getting to a brick and mortar.
We, we wanted to, uh, food truck food spot, and trade whatever it is, to take the pressure off of our restaurant. And make it so it's a quicker food. I mean, in the middle of the winter, we will have an hour a week into a restaurant. On Saturdays or Fridays, food truck will alleviate some of that. So perhaps it makes sense. That's. That's why, it's not the reason I'm, um. For it. Um, from a selfish point, it is, but the reason I'm for it is I believe that it's going to help where we can shore this.
What we, I believe will be. Quality of. Solid offering to allow. Absolutely, because they committed a much lower margin. Uh, you know, Pat Martin, when he opened, he was doing something he didn't do it. So, it's similar. It's close that we have to a food truck right now. So, uh, I wanted him for it. I, and I agree with Marshall that the special event is interesting, like, because when you think about it, where on. City property other than the convention center, but if we're talking about it, really looking at. Public property versus private property, we need some regulations probably. And I think the opinion of the special here is that a special event is covering the most likely. Location.
So, I think what what our next step for this thing is, is to clean out. Westward, Raymond Avenue, Oakwood. Cause they're in great sort of county, so they have to play by the same rules of the health department. Near the Pierce County, the health department. So I think our next step in this process is to see what these other cities are doing. Does anybody disagree with that?
Thinking about what Aberdeen's got going on, they've got a combination of. Of public and private property usage for the food truck, so that. That's something that I would be really curious to see. They, they've got the, the one on Broadway there next to the Steam Doggy Brewery. They park that out on the street. They've got, so they have an arrangement with the city where you like parking spots. But that, I mean, that's a great comparison. It's fairly close to home here where you've got public property and private property both being utilized.
What about those obvious food truck locations like the beach? The 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 R C W won't allow it on the beach because you're too far over recent. What if the unit has facility now? It's a fully self-contained thing.
Isn't the beach state property?
That's a large area, right? But I mean, that's.
That, that's a combination of cities that, Washington State Parks Department. Part of that too. They're they're releasing it there with the, I'm not sure. And I think we've given that restroom facility back and forth.
Is part of why. I, I personally like to see, you know, accessory kitchen. And with separately from their, first, and everything we're discussing, they're already. Uh, in the city food and code. And so if if Pat puts an accessory kitchen up behind the northern east room. Uh, it's it's just an extra grill. But I don't think that's what this is about. I think this is typically about food.
Accessory kitchen.
Can you put an accessory kitchen behind?
You do.
But I have to get that approved by the town. That's not a C. So, um, but but that that's not a whole shot. Food trucks wouldn't trade them.
Basically, someone collecting money. On the truck, food prepared in the truck, not at a restaurant.
Correct. You know, it's been suggested that we ask the local restaurant tour.
I think that would be good. That would help me.
How do you do that?
No, not really, but we can identify who they are.
Why don't we split it up?
It's been, and my suggestion, and can Sarah leave the room? My suggestion, Sarah, is that we. Put this up, we contact all of the restaurant tours and say we would like, we're a payment. Email, don't input, the O S D C stage will then forward it to us. Uh, and and we could create a little survey with some cut and dry, with some easy questions. But they would also have rules that were written comments. If you tried to go to the restaurant, those restaurant tours are busy in their day, and they don't have time to coffee. And and so, say, fill us out, here's your comment, if you want your work to be heard on this subject. How do you feel about having us give, don't email all the restaurant tours? And and I would specify the subject line would be food trucks. And so take all those food trucks in there, and then forward them to the staff.
Now, on another note, I have talked around Landry and Bennett. Yeah, and. And he's probably number one, and I'm probably number two as far as bombing. And, um, we've got the two major guys that are saying. Has Ron changed his mind since last year when I talked to him? Last year, he was talking about.
But what I think happened is, is last summer, so many restaurants, but so. And I mean, I've got many neighbors and friends that picked up all the hours. It's unbelievable. I ended up borrowing thirty thousand in my backyard, cause my neighbor had thirty guys pick all the hours. I spent two hours on my motorcycle.
And if you think about that, the convention center have vendors in there. So, in addition to all the restaurants being fired, there is food available through food truck at the convention center. I remember a Saturday afternoon where I couldn't get, I couldn't get into the restaurant at five P M.
It's just, it's, it's, you know, so it's it's gotta be. These guys will survive based on their low margins. The big restaurants will survive based on their. Because what's happening is people temporarily going out. People, I thought, the restaurant fast, fast, we all went, we could work for more.
Look what happened on the pizza factory.
Poor guy.
Food that first day, three days. And, you know, so there's that. And at the end of the day, Ocean Shore isn't getting any smaller. It's not. Not getting less, because there is in fact, if you look at the housing market now, granted, it's gonna shift. But with the housing market. They've sold more houses in the last year than they have ever.
There's more year-round residents as well, and people visiting really low.
I mean, wasn't Conrad Reynolds in Full Hall winner on weekend? And then, and then you look at, just, clearly, when I first moved here, there was eighteen hundred people in Ocean Shore. And when you first lived there, there was two, two. So, it went, it's now eight thousand full-time residents.
So, so what, just as as a point of reference is. Assume that that food trucks were allowed. What I would like to see is a thumbs up, is should they be a, a, what do you call it, a food pod? Or should they be private property? Then I could have that pizza on my private property. What, what does this body think is the most equitable approach to allowing? Uh, 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 food pod or. Uh, private property.
Or both.
Or both.
Well, I I think it would be.
Because the ones that Aberdeen are, most of them are. On private property or outside of existing restaurants or something like that. So I know, I mean, someone I go to, that's where they go on a job or something like that. Um, so there is that opportunity. So, I mean, and we could do you these things, like saying, you ought to have a food truck. Do we want to say that? You should all go to a restaurant.
How about designating certain areas? And as like, as like, kinda like a parking spot, a parking lot, where it's like, this is where, where we can have food trucks. It'd be easier to police it that way, or make sure they're paying their two fifty or whatever starting with. Well, there, there's gotta be code for parking. There's gotta be room for, you know, whatever site it's on, it is, whatever site it's. Food truck it is, you've gotta have. You don't wanna create traffic problems. You gotta have ingress, you gotta egress, you gotta have everything that businesses have to have if they're on the brick and mortar.
Well, so if the Shiloh wants to have food trucks, food trucks on. I guess that's the beach you were talking about, and this thing doesn't. As long as he meets all the other requirements that endure. And fire and everything else. And that's one option, right?
I agree, and so, so now you're, you're talking about somebody has to write that code. Are we gonna write that code, or are we gonna fight? Well, we're getting ahead of ourselves. So, so let's, let's, let's see what the others use it then. Let's see what other rules and regulations. We, we basically took another city's template from the Ocean Shore city. Made it applicable.
Yeah, four cities, we did research. But we thought worked with this city and it came out.
I think that's the next step. You're just gonna answer a lot of questions that were going down radicals.
So, how are, how are we gonna split up serving Aberdeen and West Point and blah blah? You, you, one and I can go, oh, no, okay.
I mean, Aberdeen's easy. You can call her. She'll know where to go. I know the mayor of Aberdeen, can open, you can call him. You can take less.
Um, and then what about your idea of of the survey, uh, corporate over businesses? And say, here's the survey, uh, and send the results, you know, send, send your email.
Let's, let's do this first. Get through this piece of it, and then if we feel we need to do that, then we'll do that. Um, but, but I have a feeling this is gonna clarify a lot for us. So I think that's the next step.
Yeah, another side is, we're, we're talking about. So, we're talking about letting any business have a burn, burn.
Yes. That some of them may see as an opportunity. Well, again, it's gonna be limited, limited to, so like. You couldn't, there's, I mean, they have to use Windermere's parking lot as it is.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, there's. Not many businesses that afford this parking place under.
Do you have any experience with, I mean, I know how we take care of parking with restaurants and other types of businesses based on, on seats at tables. Any ideas on, on how they handle parking and and traffic and stuff like that for food trucks? Anybody seen anything out there that?
That, that's what I'm hoping we find out where to contact.
Yeah, that Lisa would know about that one that sits in front of Steam Donkey, cause it takes up four city parking spots.
Yeah, right. But I think, again, rather than speculating.
I don't know if it's still there, but there used to be a food truck. There were Mexican food behind Mike Seaford in Aberdeen, opposite Walmart.
Oh, that's uh that's not.
James.
It's just off the main drive, but I didn't see any parking at all for that. Other than the small amount of parking that was the, uh, the um Prodigy's place and Mike Seaford.
So so here's here's the difference between Aberdeen and Northern Shore. Aberdeen has street parking all over.
So that's where it becomes, the illness becomes on the private property owner, be able to provide a park. So so that that's where we have to ocean shore and what these other cities. But you still have to park.
Yeah, you do, you park on the street.
Where are you gonna park? I mean, it's short term, you know, normally, you know, the five minute deal. But they always have fifty people sit down there and they always. And I know people, trust me, I know people, they don't like them. Block everybody out, so it's something we have to. So so I make a motion. That we go search these other four cities. And that uh when we part back on the next planning mission, or we can do it via email. Through through again, we can do a summary and by documentation.
Well, that that would be good thing for us. We can better talk about it.
Okay.
And and I would say. Once we compile that and send it to you, uh uh I would like to see the result. Earlier than the agenda packet, so I have I have more.
Okay. Anybody want a second? Okay, so I guess we're done with that for right now, so. You you received the picture and then.
And. Something I love to talk about, but it it was during the the uh. Said that Chief Logan uh did a presentation, very good one, and I got a lot out. And and I listened to the pain by your wife forever. And if if you observe a code violation. And report it to enforcement to that one across the email. So. I I saw that it was only on this property. But I also told him that I would be willing to. Uh both where it is. So.
Okay, you want me to start sending it to your old one too, Merle?
Kind of that email, I just don't see.
You see that email?
On that particular email.
So anyways, I I saw it, I talked to Sean, I said, is that a valid? And yes, having a whole inviability violation is a blessing. Okay, so we've probably just contacted the first one, like you contacted. So I said, okay, once we put some pizza bar with that. The discussion of availability, is that a viable? Very clear. And so it's a, I mean. So we declare a unsafe building.
Is there a abatement program that the city can do? I would I think we funded that, um. I don't know what they have about it this year, but they have started to, you know, try to resurrect that program and.
The problem with this piece of property, this is on lake side, this is on lake side. Backside is the two car garage, the living.
Is somebody living in them?
They they use them as party now. I I've called. I don't know how this city doesn't have a phone. Well, it's, you can have a friend's house. And I'm on the like runway, and you can see electric books. Drive down by the time it's to my house, these two parking beds, each every.
There's another similar one that backs up the Ken Peterson Park. And the bottom of the house and the barrage is watered up at this farm. They finally bothered up the holes in the windows and it looked about like this.
That was the one I was thinking this is pretty much talking about.
So so for now, the first thing is if you go to, you know, bill, it was parked instead of the dock, which is right across. You see the house, you see the. The other thing that I wanna say is if I look at that issue, and I think about our part. Frequent thirty forty fifty mile hour, you know, potentially ninety hundred. There's a definite safety pattern before you can fight, you blow out that house. It's done sixty eight pound or a hundred foot height. You're talking about three stories that sit back along three levels, you know, three stories, actual one stories. Now we back in the, you know, the new side. It's all over town with these type of buildings and. Last time I heard of the food truck.
Well, you ain't at the building with structure out there. But in this case, it'd be even probably feasible because that lots of.
I suggest to the mayor, the the mentalist, they can. Honestly, turn it up to real estate and persuade the seller to do something. We're gonna abate you, gonna take a while, but it could affect all of this happening. I mean, but the city needs to pressure the people, putting this spending on.
Then we extend. Saying, hey.
You're on the list.
Yep, you're on the list. Better get after it. That's something the city can do.
The abatement process is a huge ordeal. I mean, even when they've tried to abate for like. Garb- like literally your yard, Marshall, you can attest, your yard has garbage. They start the abatement process cuz they send letter after letter after letter. And that person goes and takes the truckload of garbage out of there and it's cleaned up. So then they have to stop and start the whole process over again. So when you're talking about abatement, it doesn't just like, here's a letter, we we can't just say. But I'm wondering like your guys' residential design standards that might be able to give.
The issue is, I mean, I don't. This is definitely a business and. Some of us are very interested in some of these. My experience with all the cities would have to be by itself, thank you.
Well, maybe, but there was a house on Mariner Court. It's packed for fifteen years. Finally, I bought it, tore it down.
Because you'll go back and look, I brought the seller. On the record, got the tax records, written letters, three times, zero answers from the office. Saying, I'll make an offer for you, uh fair market value, and after the third letter, I stopped. And I just watched these beautiful old nineteen seventy three mid century. Um so sort of the carrot isn't working, so what's next, I guess?
Like to the side, we have a hammer. You either eat the carrot or a hammer. There's a lot of makes that shows that that can be applied to this. The problem is that we start one, if you've identified a violation of a single nuisance. They make an effort to correct it and then basically starts to walk over again.
Well, that's for some properties, but other properties.
And it's not not just the abatement too, because once they send the letter and they cited you for something like they fully. Have the right to cite you for something, then it goes to the judge and the judge like, well, you put in a new window. So we'll hold off for another hundred and eighty days and.
Three years.
Well, you know, the property I was talking about, that backs up the Peterson Park. It's had holes in it where there's probably windows for years. And now suddenly they put five hole that doesn't look any better. But evidently, they're trying to stop.
Okay, what what are you looking for?
Well, I I want two things out of this, I'm like, I just wanna know the process, what the process you have to do. Food violation in the backyard. You 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 gotta put yourself out and say, you come on my. Yeah, she did, and and I think I didn't know that. Sean did come down and go off my dock and look at the place, but the other thing is, at some point, I think the city needs to address. The garbage looking on. Yeah, I don't I don't have a solution for it.
It's probably happened on one of the jobs, it's world class there. Yeah, like Sean told me, said he could probably sell for four thousand bucks, twenty cents.
Yeah. So.
You're not tomorrow. In the future, how? Yeah, even even if. This pipe of of unsightly. Uh what I'm hearing is that enforcement, it could take two or three years for enforcement to apply. Abate the property and.
More longer.
More longer. Maybe the solution is to bait. And they don't start fighting. I mean, it wouldn't take much to resize this thing.
Well, I wonder if you could do that, where he where he's saying there's about six, six or twelve? I wonder if you could get an image of each one of them and find a consistency of all of these have the same problem. And then see what we can't do with code or they can't do with nuisance warnings specifically.
Yeah, you know, a bunch of, somebody's been dumping in the parking lot, garage door collapsed. And slowly see someone dealing with it. But again.
That's hard.
What? The one the one out there by um. You decided that I wanted to know if they are experiencing violence. And the dog cheat up every couple of months and. I don't know what you're doing, but it looks scary from the outside, you know what I'm talking about?
I do, and and uh we we actually met the owners and.
Also, we bought it.
Yeah. That's what's going on, yeah. Mid one owner? What? Mid one owner?
No, no, it's a mall gray, that's, you'll you'll see it, it looks like a hundred dollars.
Yeah, a big gray, big gray, when they got a super line hanging on the side of the building, running around the head.
There's no way in the.
Yeah, I don't I don't know how how it ever got to the point that it did, that I hope you, the new owner is. So there's put some money into it to try to fix it up.
Well, if you check on that property on Ocean Shore.
It was already made work on. I I showed that picture to the enforcement and then somebody else had already forwarded that.
Um did you, how how you way go to address the rental?
Uh Sean was doing it, yeah. The the trailer, uh the trailer rental?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So are they gonna move that fence back?
The fence is on private property. But there's there's just no right over there uh coming out of. Yeah, you look at where the water meters are set and the property board is right there, you just have to approach down that uh section of road slowly. Um there's there's just enough room to see coming from the, you know, from the parking lot. Only about four or five feet before you get to the edge of the building.
Oh, I still have a a whole lot more space in front of my property.
It it really varies depending on how properties were developed. The the center line of the right wing isn't necessarily halfway between the property lines of one side of the street and the other. And sometimes in some cases, there's an offset, we've got public facilities um lying on property.
Okay, um I got uh one final comment. When sending emails, someone starts out, the mayor or. You have to. Use O S B C C. So it goes on the record. It was in one of your original. It's just, it's it's really critical and it's one. And I meant to be back to you, you sent me an email about. Why miss the same meeting that I thought, well, that was Sarah, so she knows.
O S B C C at O S G O B dot com.
So for on the rest email, if you're gonna send an email to the breaker, then. You also say.
It's just because we don't have you guys under our email system and because you're bound by public records requests. That's the way to have it in our system at all times. Luckily, Dan's pretty good about if there's a thread, then at least. That somebody puts it in there, but just to be more conscientious of it.
Okay, our next meeting.